UBSutter dot live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake. Where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe. Providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies and Penske truck rentals. Details at PlumasLakeSelfStorage.com.
Two dollars. Sophomores have one thousand four hundred and forty-seven dollars. Juniors have three thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seniors have seven thousand five hundred and seventy dollars. Um, the juniors made a lot of money from our year ball, which was a dance we had in January and it was pretty good. The winter dances usually don't have that much like people there, but this dance was pretty good. And then we have our class points going on. Freshmen have seven hundred and twenty-two. Sophomores have one thousand six hundred eighteen, juniors have two thousand six hundred fifty-three and the seniors have three thousand two hundred and twenty-five. And basically you have to dress up on spirit days and spend the real during break to earn class points and prizes. And the winning class gets free Kona ice in May. And then some activities that have been taking place um these past few weeks are um prom committee. And we've been looking at themes and I think we've decided that our theme is masquerade. And it's gonna have like a great Gatsby theme tied into it. And then our spirit days are still being decided by Senate and ASB. And then we had our first Friday activity last Friday and it was bowling and it was pretty fun. The PE teachers helped us set that up. And then um our eighth grade parent night is coming up February twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. Everybody's looking forward to that. And then we had a boys basketball game last Friday um at YC. YC against RV and Ubissy High School won. It's really unexpected. And then today we had a link crew movie night um at four thirty. They're trying to fundraise money. And then right now course selections are going on, so freshmen, sophomores and juniors are looking at the classes they want to take next year. And then we had our squid game rally. It was like a massive success and students participated and we had like ours and everybody had fun. And then for the last few things, um we had a karate tournament going on at RV um on February second. It was like um Malati Karate Academy and a lot of our YC ASB helped set up and they went to attend. And then lastly, um our students for sports men have been working on their portfolios and trying to get those and it's that's it.
Little color. Good. Good evening to the school board and audience. We've been pretty busy at River Valley, so here are some updates. Let's start off with winter sports. Wrestling playoffs started on Saturday with league championships at Nevada Union. River Valley had three out of the fourteen league champions. Congratulations to Colin DeLaGuente, Southie Zia and Blake DeLaGuente. Most of the team will now compete at divisionals at plaster on Saturday. Girls' basketball is also going to playoffs. Their senior night is tonight. Tomorrow, our boys are basketball is also going to playoffs and tomorrow is their senior night alongside Winter Cheers. Girl soccer has also been doing great. They actually defeated YC last week for the first time in since twenty eighteen, so we're happy to see their progress. Their last match of the season is at plaster on Tuesday. Onto some school updates. Last Wednesday was our student council meeting during Falcon Hour. There, the various students and leaders at our campus got together to discuss events and make sure our student body is being heard and represented. The same day on Wednesday was our four point O pizza party that recognizes all of our students who have perfect grades. Last Friday was our Super Bowl day where we had a Jersey themed spirit day and we held a barbecue in anticipation for the big game on Sunday. Jumping forward a week is this Friday, Valentine's Day, where we'll have another fun spirit day. If you wear red, you're in a relationship. Black is single and white means it's complicated. We'll have fun activities during lunch and I myself as senior class president have been preparing Valentine's cards and goody bags with treats to deliver every single senior, just like in memory of how we used to get in elementary school. Friday is also the end of our progress period for the third quarter, so students and teachers are getting ready for those last grades and assignments. Not only that, but Friday marks the last day before we all go on our week-long break and I know we're very excited for that. Thank you so much and have a great night.
Thank you.
Alright, um reports and information we have a government schedule.
Just kidding, sorry I jumped ahead. Sorry, staff recognition.
I'd like to introduce Director Rob Coe. We'll introduce our employee recognition.
Evening Board of Trustees, staff in the audience and audience members, friends. And we're tonight, we're excited to recognize more exceptional district staff who show our culture of excellence. We know recognition increases productivity, promotes retention and encourages continuous improvement, all of which helps our students and helps us achieve our district mission statement of preparing the foundation for each student to build tomorrow's world. Tonight, we have presentation from our Director of Technology, Robert Cookman. Who will be presenting uh the awards for two outstanding staff members of our district. Mr. Cookman?
Thank you, Rob. One's first. Alright. Hello, everyone. Thank you for hosting us tonight, Superintendent Assumi, Cabinet Members and Governing Board. I would like to take a moment to thank you, thank Jasmine Dahood. Please come up here, please. And I would like to recognize her for her amazing work that she's done in this district so far. And we'll see what else you got for you for us here coming up. I would just like to say, first I was sent an email uh by an employee that wanted to nominate one of my employees for recognition. The person that they wanted to recognize was Jasmine Dahood and they said of Jasmine, she is incredibly prompt and always very kind and customer service oriented. I would just like to say that that is one of the qualities that I'm looking for in employees and in our department. We want to be customer service oriented and I would say that Jasmine embodies that one hundred percent. She's knowledgeable, she's a joy to work with, she's professional and she's improved every year that I've known her so far. And we're leading her through her career as she rises up through the ranks. So she was a tech when I first came here and now she is a data system specialist. And perhaps if tonight is so inclined, she might be promoted to another position, so hopefully that happens tonight. We'll see. I can't wait to see what else she does in her career and in her future. She has a bright future ahead of her in the IT world if she would so desire to continue down that track. But regardless, YCUSD is blessed to have her working here in this district and I'd like to say thank you Jasmine.
Can I get picture the two of you in this general person?
Absolutely. This is your person here.
There we go. Someone has to teach me how to use my these things. Thank you.
So I have one more. In the same email, I had another person that they wanted to also nominate. So Jason Jenkins, Jason, come up here for a second, is one of our newest members of the team. If you do recognize his last name as Jenkins and so I think at home, uh actually his father who works in this district, Eric, is watching, he was unable to make it tonight, but he's one of the newest members of our team. Uh he's really learned the system in the last year and a half or so. Uh he's taken off of providing awesome customer service. He started to lead his team in multiple projects, not just over the summer, but throughout this year so far. Um he's he's also uh he was nominated again by one of our our customer or one of our customers who said of Jason, he always responds quickly and can solve any question that's thrown at him. He's friendly and helpful, which is greatly appreciated. And I have to say that I second that nomination and I second that also as well, that all those things that they say are true. You are one reason that Ubissy Unified IT Department is doing such a great job and I'm happy to have you on the team. So congratulations.
Thank you. Well-deserving.
Thank you all.
Now we get into eleven, which is reports and information. You guys are welcome to stay for this end of day report.
And amazing it is.
We're starters. Hey. I'm a comedian today, voice guy.
So this is not a very, very long report.
Take your time.
So uh in um in January, the government, the governor, you know, as we kind of think back to our budget cycle, in January, the bu- uh the governor puts out what he wants to do with the budget. And there's a lot of kind of negotiation back and forth. In May, we get a bet- um a better update after all that negotiation between the governor and all the legislators. And it's budget's still not done in May, but that's when we have to make our budget and then the budget's finalized in June. So we have the a first glimpse of the budget and there's not a ton to it. And 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 that's being put in perspective because we've had a lot of like state and federal COVID funds and a lot of one-time funds. We still have some one-time grants, but mostly from prior years. Um but but this year's budget is a little little more tame, I'd say, not as many moving parts. Um so these are, so so to kind of get educated on the budget and really what's going on, uh we we me and the fiscal team, budget team go down and and kind of listen to a school service in California. They're the premier expert when it comes to school business in the state of California. So that so I just have a, what do I have about seven or eight slides that I pulled from the hundred and fifty slides that they had that um that that update, uh just to kind of give you some big picture um concepts here. So you know, uh the California California economy is always a little interesting. We're very dependent on, uh to be honest with you, the stock market, uh but personal income tax um is 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 where we get a proportion of our tax revenue. So that's kind of one of the things that we look at and um you know, things are on on scale. We had a good year this year and uh yeah, there's no really indications of a slowing at this point. But um the the current budget has seventeen billion dollars in in surplus, it has healthy reserves. Um and the governor came with a bu- a balanced budget. You'd like to see that, so um so those are good things. Lot other things on there I'll let you read, but um those are kind of highlights of this slide. So this is what I was getting to. Um this is, so it's a little hard to see from a distance, but I'll I'll summarize. It basically has three different bar graphs of the three bigs. The three bigs are the three big components of the um revenue. And so sales and use stacks is one. Um see if I can even read that. So we're expecting roughly thirty-five um billion dollars uh for next year. Corporate tax is the next biggest one, forty, Jesus, I can't read that from here, uh thirty-seven. And then uh personal income tax, that's the big one I was talking about. So so you know, we're expecting roughly a hundred and thirty-three um billion from that. So that's the makeup of the bulk of the revenues. There's three bar graphs on each of that because essentially we get, um the governor comes up with their estimates what the economy is gonna do. There's an independent body, the legislative analyst o- office is kind of a check checks and balance on the budget and they come up with their projections as well. And then we have the enacted budget, that's the budget that was passed this last year. So when we see a a a big discrepancy between the governor and the legislative analyst office, that's a little troubling. They're fairly on ti- um on on target or or coordinated in in this. You see that, so the green bar is the governor's budget. The green bar's a lit- he's a little optimistic on each of these areas, but he's not not too out of whack from an independent agency looking at the budget. So Proposition ninety-eight is really kind of the proposition that protects school funding. Um there's guarantees for school funding. It's roughly fif- yes.
Um I want to go back to the other slide.
Okay.
And and that is that uh so on your upper right-hand corner, you have your corporation tax and you have your L A O and you have the governor's budget, but then you have your enacted budget, right? How can you have an inactive budget for twenty-five, twenty-six?
Well, so it's 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 an inactive uh projection, so this is kind of what was uh, yeah, so that.
Okay, but is uh is the blue in twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five, is that actually enacted? Or was that the projection at the time of the first budget cycle?
You know, that's a good question. I don't really have the answer to that off the top of my head, but I-
I I ask good questions.
I did. Good question. I will like get back to you on that. Yes.
Alright.
It's it's one of the problems when you don't actually develop the slides. Sometimes you don't have all the 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 um info behind it, but I will get back to you on that.
Because it would be interesting to see, because we can't have a really enacted budget, right, yet for twenty-five, twenty-six.
That's correct. Right.
Okay, so it would be interesting to see who was more historically, who was more accurate, um L A O or the governor?
That's a good point because and we we as uh budget nerds look at that a lot and it's a little back and forth, I gotta be honest with you.
I hope you understand.
In my personal opinion, I I think the legis- the legislative analysis is a little bit more accurate, but they're a little more conservative. Um and yes, but let me get back to you. The 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 more, the two more important ones are really the two, the the two um the green and the orange. Those are what we rely on as far as the projections for next year. Um but I'll get back to you on the boot blue, I've kind of what what makes up that that piece.
Okay. Just so you know, we can see who has the better track record.
That's right.
So I know who to root for in the budget Super Bowl. Alright, so I'm sorry.
Okay. So um Prop ninety-eight is the protection for school funding. Uh so um approximately fifty-five percent of state revenues are are go to schools. The bar to the right uh is um two hundred and thir- is is really the projected for twenty-five, twenty-six, two hundred and thirteen uh billion dollars. Slight increase from last year of two hundred and six. Yeah, just so you know, they're just kind of fewer risk in this budget than prior bu- um budget budgets, a little less uncertainty. Um but again, there's always uh uncertainty in in California because we are so reliant on personal income taxes, which is highly associated with the stock market. Um but uh fewer risks than past bu- budgets. Uh less reliance on one-time funding. Um so that's that's a good time. One-time funding is always a challenge uh because you you know, it's hard, you can't really hire hire people. It's not long-term with one-time funding.
And then it changes your ratios of what percentage of your budget you're actually spending on.
On people?
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. That's a good point. So LCFF, Local Control Funding Form, is the largest portion of our um budget. There's a few different pieces to that, but basically the big, you know, a couple of important pieces of, a lot of numbers here. But we get funded for a different amounts for different age ranges, TK through three, four, six, grade four, six, grade seven, eight, grades nine, twelve. So that's just the numbers behind all that. The new thing for this year is um uh there's a requirement to go for transitional kindergarten classes to have a adult to um student ratio of one adult to twenty students. Sorry, that's actually not correct. One teacher to twenty students, two adults to twenty, so two adults to twenty, but one of them obviously has to be a teacher. Um they're giving us some additional dollars uh for that uh and that's what I highlighted at the bo- bottom. It's basically uh sixty-four hundred dollars for per um TK attendance. And in your home pack, in your packet in front of you, I have another slide that shows what that impact is to Ubissy. I've pulled that from this because there's some questions on what that calculation is. We're gonna come back to you with that calculation, so I don't think what's in front of you in the printed version is accurate, so I pulled that from the presentation. So so this is a graph to say what I've said in the in in prior um budget meetings. Um we get a per student cost of living adjustment, but our district and most um districts in the state of California are actually declining attendance, so it doesn't translate to the revenue that we get. We get lower revenue than the the percentage increase in cost of living. So that's kind of what those two bar graphs uh show in each year. And that is, you know, on a state average, what the, you know, increase to LCFF on per student basis was. But statewide, uh school districts received less than that. And as I mentioned in the other slide, uh cost of living adjustment for um uh per student is a increase of two point four three percent. I um highlighted the Calpers employer rate because that is just a continued pressure on our budget. Uh that is also increasing from twenty-seven point zero five to twenty-seven point four. So that's an additional, you know, amount for, you know, on on classified um payroll that we need to uh send to Calpers for the pension system. That's all I have to share today.
Oh, I have a last question. Oh, at least for my end.
Yeah.
Um do you have a uh, you might have shown us before, so I apologize. But this graph where you have the LCFF, the real change, right? What the uh what the stated versus actual based on our declining enrollment. How, do we have a um um like a historical average, like seeing the the gap, for example, for twenty-two, twenty-three? Um the augmentation was thirteen point twenty-six, but our actual in real dollars, right? Based on declining enrollment, if I understood that correctly, was twelve point three five.
No, but that is actually a really good uh thought as far as a piece of data that I'm going to the board. Um I've talked about individually, but not like really like a trend on that. Yeah.
Yeah, so I would love to see that, like what
Yeah.
and then, you know, what it looks like average-wise, just as one of the pieces of the pie.
Yeah. Get it? Thank you.
Thank you. Wait, are there any comments um in the public on items not on the one? Either we're not, thank you. Uh consent agenda. Any motion?
Next motion.
Second Honorable Motion Member for Second Amendment Versus U.S., all those in favor?
I am.
Any opposed during the motion carries? Um member eleven, member three are absent.
Thank you. Option twenty-two, five ballot for C S B A Delegate Assembly.
Yes, so we um Ubissy Unified and you are a member of the California School Boards Association and they have representatives for Delegate Assembly for Region Four Sub-Region C, which is our region. And they did not receive any nominations. And so if the boards would like to vote, are right, then they'd be to be considered. This is your opportunity to nominate a board member for Ubissy Unified if you would like to, with the authorization to do so.
I think previously Nicola was a delegate.
Mm-hmm.
Um so is there anyone that wants to? I think perhaps. I can imagine this sort of like, sounds great.
Okay, be anatomy-ish.
Anatomy table.
No.
Um uh we're seeking the board's approval to purchase a high-tech anatomy anatomy card, maj, interactive three D visualization tables for the sports medicine programs at River Valley and Ubissy High Schools. These are basically like um three D visualizations of um human anatomy
Hmm.
that um are highly sophisticated, they're used at universities, they're used at medical facilities and uh since the last five years, a lot of high schools are using them in their C T pathways. Um so we have a Golden State Pathways Program grant um that does support sports medicine and we're seeking approval to purchase two of those tables, one for each high school.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Um I know with any type of technology, there's always updates, so there's probably, what do you say? You know, every year there might be a refresh or whatnot. Is this like the latest and greatest?
Yeah, this is the latest and greatest. I've actually been through a training in my old district through this. Um so with this co- does come training fees, so they have a trainer come out and they train them, they train the teachers
Hmm.
how to use it and then the teachers obviously train the kids on how to use it. It is highly sophisticated, but it's the most up-to-date medical technology in terms of uh learning outcomes for medical pathways.
Is there an option to have the students and the teachers like trained together, like have the trainers come in?
Yeah, they can, they can have the trainers come in when the students are there.
Okay.
Yeah, so they can get um
Real
real
In the moment.
Level training.
Issues or whatever.
Yeah, because the only thing on their contract is online training.
Yeah, they can do thin for strange, I kind of kind of kind of come up with for do that.
Is the grant covering the entire cost unit?
Yeah.
Be really cool. When do we end this payment coming in?
Uh after tonight, um we have to put in the requisition, so forty-six weeks.
When they get to see it?
Um let's give that maybe a couple months just. But they're they're pretty high, they're pretty high-tech.
Yeah.
Um but with sports medicine, you get to see really like the anatomy of muscles, of sprains
We're not having that ever hurt you.
and tendons. Yeah.
I'm picturing like Tony Stark, wearing a suit. That's the truth, yeah.
And you guys would definitely have to come see these uh tables because they're it's it's very awesome to to.
Yeah, be awesome. Can you, can you keep us posted on when it's up running?
Yeah. Absolutely. That's gonna be exciting.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Would be. Alright, can I get a motion if there's any more questions?
Make a motion right for a second.
Second motion.
Okay. Okay. Uh Honorable Motion Member C S Yola and the Second Amendment Member, don't tell those in favor. Um any opposed during the motion carries? C, Approval of Contract for Gray Avenue Kitchen.
So we've talked about this project in the past, um and so Chelsea um Slattery, the Director of uh Student Nutrition, uh sought a um a uh kitchen infrastructure uh grant. And after a lot of, you know, work going into to identify what's the best use of these funds um and talking to staff, uh it was determined that uh Gray Avenue Middle School really was a kitchen that was struggling um operations-wise to feed all the students over there. Uh small, not inefficient, that type of stuff. So so we've done a lot of work and um planning to uh develop the, you know, the the scenario that's fits closely to the grant amount and this is the result of that. Uh so this is a contract or a lease leaseback. I I tried to give you a a more extensive uh um description of what this is because it's a little, you know, complicated. Um but essentially it does give us more control over the process, gives us a maximum prize, but it's still a competitive process. Um and so we did receive uh three bids back on that on this. Uh we we are selecting the lowest bid here. Um and it has some contingencies built into that price too, just in case there are some uh um just in case when there are project overrun costs, that's depends be how that works. But uh but we're excited to move forward with this project and that we're seeking approval on the contract here. Oh, sorry, the amount, the lowest bid is one million four hundred sixteen thousand dollars.
To United Builders.
To, yes, sorry, to United Builders Contractors. Uh we expect the grant to cover everything but roughly fifty thousand dollars of of the project.
I have a little question.
Sure.
Um one is, um are there any handwringings like of what this should look like or would look like?
There are um architectural drawings that I guess.
Okay, is that, when we do remodels like this in the future, is it possible to get those stand-in?
Uh I'd I'd maybe, I think so.
Oh, just in the future.
I mean, they're just like huge. I don't know if they'll they'll get into a format that we can all see.
But it shouldn't be a part of the contract anyway, right? Because how else are they bidding on it?
You know, you're right. Uh it is uh um it's not necessarily part of the con- contract, it's part of the RFP, the bid doc- the documents they have to bid on. They'll probably reference the drawings in there, but not necessarily be part of it.
And then, yeah.
That's a good question.
The other question that I had is that um The other question that I had is that, um, I know, I mean, obviously I don't know what the long-term master plan looks like for Gray Avenue. Um, I, I worked there for two years and I know that the current space is snug.
Yes, so, so, so we had, we had a, um, separate gym built into the facility master plan for Gray. So that would be more of a dining hall and, and a gym that falls in the master plan.
So does, does the remodel take into account the future?
Well, yes, in the sense that, um.
Because I would, I would hate to do like a one point five million dollar, four million dollar update, um, and then have to go back and then.
So we're not tearing it down. Uh, uh, so, so, or.
No. Or make it bigger, better, or whatever. Do you, do you know what I mean? Like.
Yeah, why are we spending money if we're gonna redo it again? Is that kind of where you're getting at? Yeah, yeah, okay. Uh,
Yeah, yeah.
Well, first of all, again, you know, until we've made progress on that, that's a, so this master plan is a much longer term process.
That's true.
And but the answer is, that is still going to be a dining, you know, um, area
Hmm.
and a separate gym for sports and athletics. So, so no, so the answer is no, we're not gonna, this is not.
Okay. I, I, I think essentially what may be a better way of explaining this is if we're gonna spend one point six or one point four, excuse me, um, on this particular design, does the design take into account what future use is going to be, or can we?
So I think, I think, yeah, so I understand the long-term in terms of we have a master facility plan for each of our schools. I think in this case, this is a grant that, um,
Do you know?
we're going to be using in order to update the kitchen because it is snug, in order to make it better, better in terms of operational, in terms of the kitchen staff. And it's needed right now. And because of long-term, um, you know, it could take a while before we connect to them. So I think it's, um,
Sure.
it, I don't know that it necessarily fits into the full design, but it will allow the operation of the kitchen to be more efficient.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, that's absolutely, absolutely.
Anything for those ladies?
Yeah, but it is snug.
It is. Honestly, I think I shit myself on like the milk, drinking this a couple of times.
I think there's, all of those things are, I think they're taken into consideration when you're designing.
Yeah. Yeah.
Alright, any other questions? No? Can I get motion please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, on a motion by members Cessola and a second by a member Bonzlet, um, any, all those in favor?
Alright.
Um, any opposed during the motion carries? Um, and then I do have a request for a comment on an agenda item that's not, um, excuse me, a comment from the public on an item that's not on the agenda that were just late arrival. Um, so if it's okay with the board, can we take that comment now?
Yes.
First.
Yeah? Right. So can I go ahead and, um, recognize Fritz? Jovalena?
Javier.
Javierana. Sorry, I apologize. And then we just have a statement that we're gonna read before you, um, you go ahead and speak, and then we'll talk about time limits this month.
Thank you. Sure.
Mm-hmm. Item's not appearing on the agenda. Those sort of public, the Brown Act specifically, Government Code, Section five four nine five four point two provides that no action or discussion shall be taken on any item unless it is adequately described in timely posted agenda. Accordingly, though the public may comment on matters within the board's jurisdiction that do not appear on the agenda, the board cannot respond to such comments without running the risk of deliberating or initiating discussion on topics not properly before the board. Given the prohibition set forth in the Brown Act and the risks associated with responding to public comments, the board does not respond to the community's questions or comments. The board will respect the rights of the public to express their viewpoints on matters of board's jurisdiction. However, comments that are defamatory or that violate the privacy rights of any students or individuals may not be protected by law. The board shall not permit any disturbance or willful interruption of board meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I appreciate you allowing me to address the sport. I understand that I was late and I apologize for that. Um, but my name is Fritz Javelena. I'm a newly appointed judge here in Sutter County, and I'm here to provide some information about a really great program uh, with the hopes that, uh, word will spread and, uh, more schools will participate. And the name of that program is, uh, Judges in the Classroom. Uh, it's a program that's been around for about a decade now, um, but, uh, only about half of the counties in the state participate. And, uh, I'm hoping that Sutter County and Uba County will, uh, be participates, uh, participants moving forward. And how it works is that any interested, um, educators, um, from any school, uh, grades K through twelve, uh, can go to the website. If you Google, uh, Judges in the Classroom, you'll be able to find a list of, uh, different lesson plans, um, involving a lot of different legal issues such as constitutional rights, a mock trial, uh, criminal procedure and what have you. And so any teachers are welcome to come to the website, uh, submit a request, and then that request will make its way to, uh, the local courthouses. And then judges will be invited to come to the school and, um, deliver, uh, different lessons. And so I'm hoping that, uh, you could please pass this information along to, um, any educators, uh, in the area that would be interested. I did, uh, print off the website. I don't know if I can leave that with someone, and if you look through it, uh, you can see the different topics that, um, can be covered by judges and, uh, and again, I'm hoping that this is something that can really take off here in Sutter County.
Thank you very much, Priti.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it. Have a good night.
You too.
Thank you. Now you're.
Alright, um, board reports, information or discussion?
No?
Um, I attended the, um, Uba City Charter School Board Meeting. It was rescheduled to last night, so I, I went to a board meeting last night.
Okay.
And, um, they had to give away all their chickens because of the bird flu. They can't show their chickens at the fair, so that was kind of sad. They're gonna, they're going to, some of the students are gonna show um, rabbits this year instead of the chickens. So that was kind of a sad thing. No eggs. Because, um, I was told to get some eggs and they don't have any eggs anymore. Um, but anyway, that was, that was a sad part. They, they're very active in, um, FFA and which is wonderful, and they've gone to some of the, some of the recent conferences and stuff, so that's really cool. Yep, and I already talked to Dorina about.
Something, yeah. Awesome. And then we have our, um, government liaison meeting on Thursday at three. I don't think we've, yeah, three as well. Um, I don't think we've gone through committees or anything like that since, like with Bonzlet.
No, we can't. Yeah, and we should do that. So I will bring to the next meeting the committee assignments.
Okay, sounds good. If anybody wants to switch or stay or join? We can do that.
Could, could you explain a little bit more?
So there's different committees. Um, I'm on the graduation committee and also the government liaison committee. And depending on the committee, we discuss things that fall within that umbrella. So the government liaison meeting, um, Superintendent Assumi is there, then we have city members, um, and then we have county members as well that are, that attend. And so that's kind of like a platform for us to advocate and tell them what's going on within our school district, and tell us what's going on in the community. Um, if there's new development, things to anticipate, you know, we're, we're getting a lot of construction happening with Teraboina and Uvista. And so Superintendent Assumi can then take a look and see how many families are we, um,
anticipating.
anticipating in those areas and then flex to those schools. Um, or if there's any thing that we've heard from the community about like safety concerns and whatnot, that's a perfect platform to be able to share that. Um, the graduation committee, I know we talked, I haven't met for the graduation committee in a little while, actually. Um, yeah, just with like graduation requirements or if there's any proposals to update or.
Mm-hmm.
But there's different committees and we can get a list and see if anybody wants to adjust. And
Great for it.
depending on the committee, some meet more frequently than others. Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, communications from public? None?
There were not any.
Thank you. Um, comments from employees?
Good evening, board members, uh, staff and anybody in the audience. I'm Dee Lukens, President of the Uba City Teachers Association. Tonight I'd like to talk about priorities. Your ending fund balance according to first interim is, um, the undesigned ending fund balance. There's a much bigger ending fund balance, but your undesigned ending fund balance is, um, currently sitting at thirteen million dollars. Those are today's dollars that we hope the district will spend on today's kids. Those budget priorities should reflect what we're all here to do and educate our students for a better tomorrow. We will be engaging negotiations with the district on the Thursday following our upcoming break. YCTA will bring, uh, proposed language for safety. Protecting the safety of staff and students are one of our highest priorities. We'll bring priorities about class size. We all know that class size does matter. We'll bring a, some proposals about hours, and then finally we'll bring our proposal about, um, salaries and compensation. As we prepared that proposal, we reflected on numbers. Numbers such as this year's one point zero percent COLA, next year's two point four three percent COLA. We also reflected on the, um, increasing number of vacancies, the impacts and effects of those vacancies. You heard from our speech and language pathologists at your last meeting, as they shared with you the job and the impacts of the severe shortage. You'll hear from others who will talk to you about the impacts of those unfilled vacancies as well as, um, the vacancies that are filled by, uh, folks working beyond a hundred percent. And along those lines, as I talk about how we attract and retain educators to Uba City, I decided tonight's story should be me. So I want to tell you about me. I came to Uba City in nineteen ninety as an eighth grade science teacher at Andros Carperos Middle School. That's what we were called back in nineteen ninety. It was the second year of Andros Carperos, was the first year of our eighth grade class. And I got to usher in the first eighth grade class at AK with two of my colleagues who are no longer with Uba City Unified. In nineteen ninety-one, that was in the spring of my first year teaching in Uba City, I made the decision to move to Uba City. I made that decision based on a couple of scenarios. One was, um, the, the cost of housing here was a little cheaper than down in Sacramento. And I driven to the north side of the Buttes to, uh, out to a very good friend, the Cordyce, and fell in love with it. So here I am in Uba City. My starting salary in Uba City on step one was twenty eight thousand dollars back in nineteen ninety-one. I bought my home for ninety nine thousand five hundred dollars. I could afford that as a single parent on my salary. Okay, I admit it was a little tight, but I could make it work. So why did I tell this story tonight? Because this week, down a block from my house, a smaller home, a three-two, as opposed to my four-two has an asking price of four hundred twenty-nine thousand. So my home has, um, well, the cost of a home in my neighborhood has gone up more than four or times. The starting salary on step one now, if I were to join Uba City Unified, is fifty-six thousand dollars. Twice my starting salary, but buying a home is four times what I started my salary at a long time ago. We need to do something to attract and retain great educators to come to Uba City. We need to make sure that, um, our salary allows them to afford to live in our community, to buy homes in our community, and to become members of our community. I was not a born and raised in Uba City kid, but instead I was somebody who came and made this my home and made this my community. And we need other educators to both stay in Uba City and come to live in Uba City. That cost of housing isn't even begin to tell the story. Because it doesn't address the cost of eggs and the cost of gas. This is a people business, and we need to make sure that our priorities reflect it's a people business. We need to make sure we take care of the people that are taking care of our kids, the people that are building our community. I urge you to continue to look at the numbers. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, are you talking for CSEA?
Oh, sure.
Okay. Sorry, didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Mm-hmm.
Good evening, board members. My name is Peggy Costa and I'm Vice President of our Chapter, uh, two sixty-five, CSEA. Um, I'm, I'm reporting this from Mercedes. Our president, she's out of town, on a little trip. Uh, so we're making progress, uh, with our negotiations, um, and, uh, working very hard on our job description task force. We have another meeting coming up pretty soon. I want to congratulate this, this staff, um, that were given awards tonight. And I know that most of us are looking forward to the break, because, um, some of us will still be working, but the rest of them will hopefully enjoy their time off. So, thank you very much and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Any comments from board members? I do have a comment. I have a request. Um, this is with regards to the subpay. Um, I'm hoping at a future board meeting, either the next one or whenever we're able to squeeze it in that we can get a report. I know there have been questions about, um, the turnaround time for subpay, and so if you can just get a report on what the current system is, like what our process is to getting that, um, paid out or going through the county or whatever the process may be, and if there's any way to, uh, make adjustments to make it more efficient, essentially. But if we can get a report on that. Thank you. It's the only I have. Comments from Superintendent?
Yes, um, I just want to know if, um, the board would like to, um, Bob Kane from CSBA, he worked with the board last year, and I think the prior year before that. Uh, we have a new board member, uh, very, very relevant. And would if you'd like to do, uh, a governance training workshop with him? It's one of the things that's, um, in the, your board bylaws regarding governance training, if you would like to, to do that with CSBA again. And then also, um, I think Bob also facilitated the board's self review, so you're coming upon your, I mean, for the board's self review in the next few months. So would you like him to come in and do a meeting just governance and your board evaluation, and then go through that process with you all again?
I would like it.
It's also a good pressure test.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if possible, is it, is there any way to do both in one?
Hmm.
Instead of multiple meetings?
Yes.
Okay.
I think it would be a, a one-time meeting, a, a meeting.
And then it's a time to be back for.
And then it would be the, the board's self-evaluation would be done electronic, where you could, you could be able to.
Okay.
Yeah.
How long would be?
Um, yeah, it's usually a couple hours.
Is there ever less?
Yeah, and so it could be, and I can ask him that, is maybe spend an hour and a half on evidence, and then a half an hour on the setting up the board evaluation process and then working with you outside as he did before.
Um, well, I mean.
Is that, would that work feel?
Yeah, but if, if we're gonna use the same tool that we did for the, um, self-evaluation for us, then maybe we can do that ahead of the meeting and then discuss if there needs to be.
Yeah. Results and action plans therein?
Yes.
Yes, but I think that would be more productive.
Okay.
Um, and, and the governance training would be great. Of course, I know I'm speaking out of turn mistakenly. I'm so sorry. Like, but if he goes over that, like governance powerpoint cycle thing, it's like every single time we do that. And it seems like, um, a disproportionate time spent retreading that, like, color graph would be great and, you know.
Well, we, we've also worked with Diane Pina Mura, who was a former superintendent at CSBA.
Oh, no, I mean, it's not a personal thing, but I think what happens, right, they both do, and then it's like, it's the CSBA, like, you know, they train all their people.
Okay. With those two processes.
Now listen, we're gonna go over this graph for an hour and a half, and we're all gonna talk about it. And I'm a little bit more, but like, I'm like, I get the, and I get especially for new people, the like thirty thousand foot view. I totally get that, but like be more like practical.
Right, and, and, and if you remember, we also worked with, with Diane from, uh, pre and that what Diane did was also work with us on our governance handbook and then updating those things. And so it really will be
practical.
what would, what's the pleasure of the board that he might want to do? But you do need by your bylaws, uh, self-evaluation, so.
Hmm.
But I, I could ask him to maybe do that upfront, and then you guys would have an opportunity at the session to talk about that. Um, the self-evaluation, develop an action plan, and from that lead into next steps. Let me talk or think about some alternatives and I'll get back to you.
I just want to emphasize, this isn't a personal thing.
No, no, no. What yours is saying is it was, can be redundant.
It could be, yeah, and, um.
Then we suggest.
And, and, yeah, not that, like, it's not good to always retread the fundamentals and that sort of thing, but the disproportionate time spent doing that as opposed to like, for example, when Diane did it. I remember we talked a lot about parliamentary procedure because we don't use Robert's rules, um, and kind of going over like what's the flow. Um, because although a night like tonight, you know, there's not interruptions, there's not, but if and when there is a more heated that way we are all on the same page as what the procedure is, what you can do, what you can't do, so that there, nobody sees like favoritism or, I know.
Well, and that's why I bring up Renee as well, because of the fact that you're right. Um, Bob is trained by CSBA. He's a trainer, and so his, um, his work with governance is probably something we've seen at the CSBA conference. Diane, she was a little bit more customized in terms of more practical governance.
Yeah.
And we can maybe talk to him or whoever the.
And we can maybe talk to him or whoever the center is going to be about what the agenda is going to be and then maybe we can share that out with the board. And then if they feel like they want to have more of an emphasis on one item than other, then that would, he knows that he for this particular item, this is what the board would like, more emphasis.
So actually and I can chat further, then we can make some decisions and then.
Yep. Sounds good.
Based on the board hate that.
Sounds good. Yeah.
That's good, thank you.
Okay, next board meeting.
Board meeting.
Sorry. Board meeting. Board wait. Board meeting is February twenty-fifth, the open session is at seven PM. Can I get a motion to adjourn? So moved. Okay, on a motion by member CSUola and a second by member Quilty, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed during non-motion carries? Laura?
Uba Sutter dot lives local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com. Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Uba Sutter and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Uba Sutter and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at five three zero seven four nine eight eight zero zero. Comfort Keepers of Uba Sutter and Nevada Counties. You've seen signs marking some of the gems in Marysville. They're produced by Sapphire Sign Company, providing something small, large, and mobile. With decades of experience, Sapphire Signs has pioneered local production of a variety of signs like temporary campaign-style signs, welcomes for unique events, building signage, event promotion, and vehicle customization. Need a sign? Make it a gem from Sapphire Sign Company, on the web at sapphirmarketinggroup.net. Sapphire.